Okay, and we are live.
Good morning and welcome to this continued meeting of the Board of Trustees. Sarah, would you please take the role?
Yes, Broughton.
Here.
Chen. Cisneros.
Here.
Dela Cruz. Dellen.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
Kanong.
Here.
Bertula.
Here.
Shelby.
Present.
Sewell.
Present.
Stallings.
Here.
Tony.
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you. All right, we'll begin with a call for public comment. If you're on Zoom and you would like to address the board, please raise your hand. Using the raise hand feature on Zoom.
We already have a couple of hands up, so if you'd like, we can start activating their microphones, giving them.
Yes, so just let me make a couple of comments. So, so we'll limit each speaker to three minutes and ask you to please limit your comments to the items on today's agenda. And with that, Doug, please go ahead.
So we're going to start with Kirsten, Kirsten Genzold Rumage. And your microphone's been made available, and as soon as you unmute it, you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Cam.
My name is Kirsten Genzold Rumage, and I'm a student intern at the Center for Public Interest Law at the University of San Diego School of Law. CPIL is very concerned about the facts that are continuing to emerge with the Los Angeles Times investigative reporting regarding attorney Thomas Turardi and his relationship with the state bar. While we understand that most of the reporting is focused on timeframe that precedes most members of this board and executive staff, it nonetheless raises significant issues with respect to the bar's discipline system and failure to protect the public from incompetent and unethical attorneys. We urge this board to take this reporting extremely seriously and to expeditiously undertake a thorough assessment of the bar's discipline system. What is clear is that the existing complaint-based model of discipline is failing. We commend the board for establishing the ad hoc commission on the discipline system to consider risk-based and other models of proactive regulation. This is a very important start, and will ideally allow the bar to identify areas of potential consumer harm before it occurs. However, we are concerned that the commission is comprised of almost entirely attorneys. This poses the risk of an echo chamber of individuals who may lack the ability to be objective when it comes to designing a system of discipline for members of their own profession. We recommend that the board appoint several public members to join this commission, including individuals who have actually suffered harm at the hands of an incompetent or unethical attorney and who have experienced discipline system from the standpoint of the complainant. This is very important and valuable, this very important and valuable perspective is missing from the commission. While the commission considers new models of regulation, swift action is necessary now in order to protect the public. We recommend that attorneys and their malpractice insurers should be required to report all professional malpractice settlements to the bar. This would not necessarily result in immediate discipline, but would provide the office of the chief trial counsel with important data regarding potentially harmful attorneys and enable them to identify patterns and trends to more proactively regulate the profession. As evidenced by the LA Times piece, this is an area of great concern. The fact that these settlements are unreported is not only preventing the bar from doing its job, but it also perpetuates egregious misconduct, placing more and more clients at risk. We also recommend that the board consider additional transparency measures with respect to malpractice settlements so that the public is able to make more informed choices about the attorneys they choose to hire.
You have, you have 10 seconds remaining?
Finally, the bar should discuss its internal enforcement of its conflict of interest code. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Thomas Coleman. Mr. Coleman, once your microphone's available, which I see it is, if you unmute it, you have three minutes.
Very good. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address the Board of Trustees. I'm addressing item number 115 on legislative priorities, specifically goal number four, access to legal services for low and moderate income people. I'm the legal director of Spectrum Institute, a nonprofit that advocates for justice and equal rights for people with cognitive disabilities. We're proposing that the state bar create a work group on access to legal services for probate conservatives and proposed conservatives. We're talking about a population that includes seniors with cognitive challenges and adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, most of whom are low and moderate income people. I want to give you a few examples of denial of access to legal services. In several courts, including Sacramento, which I studied in some depth, the courts are not even appointing counsel for proposed conservatives with serious cognitive challenges. There's no way these individuals can navigate a complex legal proceeding without appointment of counsel. Secondly, I believe that there's a problem in denial of counsel of choice. In the case of Elizabeth H. out of Solano recently, she's a young woman in her twenties with Down syndrome, high functioning. She appeared in court in a conservatorship proceeding with a chosen attorney. The judge refused to acknowledge the chosen attorney, appointed the public defender, but before doing so, placed her in a temporary conservatorship. She had no counsel, even though there was one there for her. Also Teresa Jankowski, a woman in her eighties in Los Angeles, showed up in a conservatorship with counsel of choice. The court refused to accept that. Appointed counsel, court-appointed counsel then argued against her and in favor of a conservatorship. Senate Bill 724 is a good bill that would address this issue of denial of counsel of choice. The state bar should support that. Then there's the need to clarify the role of counsel as a zealous advocate. Some attorneys are advocating more as a guardian ad litem or court investigator. AD 596 attempts to address that, but it's a bad bill. I called it a Trojan horse because it does more harm than good, and I think the state bar should take a look at that and oppose that bill. Performance standards for attorneys, they lack them. There aren't any in these conservatorship cases. The judicial council says that it lacks authority to adopt performance standards, or it would, but it says that the state bar, it's within your purview to do that.
Mr. Coleman, you have 15 seconds left. Thank you.
Finally, the state bar complaint system is not accessible to litigants with cognitive disabilities. I've said that before, and I'm saying it again, and I believe that we should find ways to provide indirect access to the complaint system. So please create a work group, and we'd be happy to work with the state bar on this.
Chair Slay, that appears to be the final person among our attendees who would like to make a public comment.
All right. Thank you, Doug, and thank you to both members of the public who offered comment to the board. We appreciate it. Our next item on our agenda is approval of the open session minutes from January 22nd, 2021. If any board member would like to make a motion, I'd welcome it unless you'd like to have the minutes read in full.
As presented.
May I make my turn? Yes.
May I make a? I, I, I think there was a small but significant omission in the minutes. And what it is, is there's no recording of the public speakers. And the previous minutes that we approved in January, there were three sets that we approved. Each had the name of each speaker, and I believe it had the transcript of what they said. And I think for a public agency, it's of great value to have a record of the public speakers as part of the minutes. And so my request would be that you can, we consider postponing, taking action on these minutes to the next board meeting when that omission can be, you know, addressed. And we can have that because these, you know, are kind of a permanent record. And I just think that, I guess that was my expectation because in my first meeting, each of those minutes that we approved did have the names and what they said. And so I guess I just kind of expected that and didn't look at it till last night. I just didn't have the time. I left the minutes till the end. And so that's.
That's not, not a problem. Donna, do you want to comment? I, I believe that we had internal conversations that the minutes, the last set of minutes were much more detailed than has been the practice at the state bar, but I'll turn it over to Donna to respond to that.
Yeah, actually, I think Doug is, is prepared on that, Doug?
Yeah, so there were internal conversations related to prior direction that the prior executive director had given with regard to including public comments in the minutes. So there was a disconnect between the prior sets of minutes and then a decision that I had made regarding pulling public comments off of the minutes for a couple of reasons. One is that it's, it's very staff-intensive. Two is that we run the risk of mischaracterizing. They weren't actually transcripts. They were, they were simply an effort to summarize because the three, three full minutes of, of public comments per person, when you have a lot of public comment, can get quite lengthy. But then the third reason, which I think is more dispositive and would really guided my decision, is that we have recordings of all of these meetings. And so the recording seems to me to be a more faithful representation of what the public comment actually is and what the speaker sought to convey. And so rather than including those in the minutes of the meeting, which I understood more to be a, a record of the actions taken by the board rather than a full accounting of everything that occurred at the meeting, I wanted to make sure that we retain sort of a separation between what's in the recording of the meeting, which includes all of the public comments and and can be reviewed, and then the actions of the board, which we would use as we record in our minutes.
So I don't know, does, any discussion on this point? Mark, any further thoughts? Ruben?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to say that this is an issue that I have, I have dealt with in my, in my daytime job, right? I serve multiple elected and appointed boards and the prevailing, the prevailing practice among many public agencies that I've worked with is to, to sort of strike the balance between what Mr. McLeod has described and what trustee Tony, I think, is, is requesting. The, the fact that we have a permanent record of the recording of the, of the meetings, I think speaks well to our efforts to maintain a historical record, but you got to balance that against the practical meaning of transcribing multiple people's verbatim comments. So I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of including public comment verbatim. Certainly a reference that, you know, person X spoke about the topic is what I've seen more commonly. And so I would, you know, I would, I would suggest that as a compromise.
That'd be completely acceptable to me, completely acceptable. All right, any further discussion? All right, so I don't think we need a motion on this. I think it sounds like it's a sense of the board to go with the compromise that Ruben has proposed and Mark Tony has supported. All right, and we can also, if we need to have further discussions about this internally, we'll do that before the next meeting if we feel that we need to bring it back, but this sounds, this sounds doable. All right.
Chair, I'm sorry, Sarah, the secretary, I would just like to clarify the, the, that middle road. So it's the naming of the person who made public comment and just like the, the agenda item number that they've come to speak on. Okay. Um, it's not always clear that, that public comment is being given on a particular item on the agenda. So I just want to mention that also. But I just wanted to make sure I understood the direction. So thank.
And I think it was, I think it was the topic. And also that sometimes we have a new, you know, a large number of public commenters. So we might want to put this as an appendix to the minutes because I don't think we want like the first four pages of the minutes to be names of public speakers. It could be kind of distracting, but.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
I mean, I would say that in the, if you look at the, the, the minutes from, that we approved in January, those were the first minutes I ever saw, right? And I thought those, the nice balance, it was the name, who they represented, and there was a few sentences about what they were talking about so that you got a good sense of what their point was, what they wanted, why they showed up. And I think that's valuable, and you can always say full transcripts available online. But it's, it's useful for us as, as board members to remind ourselves to, you know, you know, you review minutes to, to say, is there anything we've forgotten? Is there anything we need to refresh ourselves with? Are there items that maybe we should put on future agendas and that I didn't think about it between this meeting and last meeting, but I want to return to? And I think it's also good for members of the public to see their comments acknowledged in minutes that they took the time to show up and they at least are acknowledged as having shown up. I just think it's a good practice. I agree. We don't need to do the entire transcript. I completely agree that that's overboard.
All right. Why don't, why don't we do this? I, I propose that we table this item, and we'll have some internal discussions and we'll involve Mark and Ruben in that, I think, because they're two people who have spoken. And we'll bring something back to the board at the next meeting. So we'll have a revised set of these minutes and also some comments on this topic.
Sounds good to me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. So, all right, so that dispenses with the minutes. Chair's report. I have a very short report for you today. But I do want to make a few comments. First, because I was not able to preside at our meeting in January, I have not had the opportunity to welcome publicly our two newest trustees, Melanie Shelby and Mark Tony. We're glad to have you on board, and we welcome your enthusiasm and dedication. The second thing I want to say is that I have to call out Donna's written executive director report. It's an amazing document, and if you haven't had a chance to look at it, I highly recommend it to you. I was just sort of stunned to read the list of reforms and initiatives that the board and executive leadership have engaged in since I joined the board in 2016. And I think these projects reflect a commitment on the part of the board and executive leadership to reform and innovation of the operations of the state bar. And that's a commitment that continues. So when I first ran for the board in 2016, when we had elected seats and attorneys in various districts voted to elect, at that time, I think it was six members of the board. One of the things I said is that it's, it's never a good answer to a question to say, why are we doing something? Well, we've been doing it this way for 30 years. And as long as I've been on the board, the board has taken the opposite approach and executive leadership as well, which is let's innovate. Let's look at everything we do and see if it can be improved with a fresh look and perhaps with perspectives that haven't been heard in the past. So that I'm glad we're continuing with that. An example of that work is on our agenda today where we have a report from staff on another reform effort regarding measures to address disparities in the discipline system. And of course, I'm very excited that we have now chartered and constituted the ad hoc commission on the discipline system to do a deep dive into that very fundamental function of the state bar. Finally, as we will discuss later, I'm glad to say the executive committee has recommended that the board support a budget request in the state legislature that would provide a one-time increase of $20 million of funding to help fill the extra need for legal services created by the pandemic. So you'll hear more about that later and have an opportunity to vote on that issue. And with that, I will pass it on to Donna for the executive director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I go into my formal executive director report, if I could ask staff to promote Wallace Tang. And I wanted to take the opportunity and to introduce the board formally to Wallace Tang, the state bar's new chief financial officer. And those trustees who participated in Wallace's interview panel and members of the finance committee have already had the opportunity to, to meet Wallace and get to know him a little bit, but I wanted to introduce him to the full board. Wallace comes to the state bar after 20 years with the San Francisco airport, where he served for the last 11 or so as the, as their controller. If you thought that the issues at the state bar had to deal with to scramble to address the fiscal implications of the pandemic were something, just imagine being the controller at a major international airport with the fiscal implications and the financial, the financial losses that were suffered in the transportation industry. Wallace began with us as the CFO on March the first, and we are thrilled to have him as part of our leadership team. I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank Kevin Harper for the tremendous job that he did as the interim CFO during the last several months. Under Kevin's leadership, we were, among other things, able to produce the state bar's 2021 budget. So thanks to Kevin and welcome to Wallace. Wallace, if you wanted to say just a few brief words.
Good morning, everyone. You'll be okay?
Yes.
Thank, thank you, Donna, for the good words and the warm welcome and the honorable Board of Trustees and including Chair Slay and Vice Chair Duran and the other trustees. And I'm humbled to accept these jobs, and I look forward to support the executive director, the board, and most importantly, the overall, the state bar operations. And I heard about the ideas of innovations and assessing what we have been doing and looking in the future, what can be done in a more effective and efficient way. I hope that I would be one of the puzzle pieces in the overall puzzle to support the operations down the road. And I'm here to help. And thanks again for having me. Thank you.
Well, Wallace, on behalf of the board, let me welcome you to the state bar, and we're very glad to have you on our team.
Thanks again.
Thank you. And so returning to my formal executive director report, in light of the lengthy written report that I provided, I will keep my, my verbal comments brief today. And as the board knows very well, better than I, under the leadership of trustees Duran and Sewell, the bar is in the midst of recruiting for a new state bar executive director. We'll be receiving an update later today on the progress of the outreach and the recruitment efforts and the next steps as we move this process forward. If all continues to proceed apace, I'm hopeful that we'll have a new face sitting in this virtual seat for the next regularly scheduled business meeting of the board. And so is this could possibly be my last report from this particular vantage point? As you saw in my written remarks, I really wanted to take the opportunity to look back at the state bar's accomplishments over the last several years and to lay the groundwork for how all of us, board and staff may want to approach our thinking about the next five-year strategic plan. There are several ways to categorize and organize the work that we do at the bar. We've traditionally talked about it primarily in terms of the substance, regulation, discipline, licensing, ethics, or competence, access, and diversity. But as you saw in my written report, I think it may be even more important to look at the guiding principles for how we approach that work. Accountability, transparency, efficiency, and access are the key pillars that support our mission and guide all of our efforts. Whether our focus were lawyers, doctors, architects, court reporters, or countless other licensed professions, accountability, transparency, efficiency, and accessibility, you could add integrity, excellence, are the pillars that should guide us as a state agency, as a public protection agency, and as a service agency. These are the pillars that need to remain top of mind come January in figuring out how best to advance our mission over the course of the next five years. They are reflected in our strategic plan in how we prioritize initiatives and measure agency performance and how we, how we report that performance to our oversight bodies and to the public. I have to say that I was really glad that I engaged in the exercise of thinking back on all of our work over the last several years through this lens. The listing I provided in my written report is far from comprehensive. I realized that if I tried to capture everything, my 10-page report could easily have tripled in size. Heck, I didn't even include the remote bar exam as an example of something that we've done to improve accessibility to the profession or the pending work of the Blue Ribbon Commission on the future of the bar exam as a project that are promoting accountability. Two incredibly huge pieces of work that we have or will be undertaking. But as I said, I was glad, I was glad I engaged in this exercise because reexamining work, the, our work under this rubric made me really aware. And as Sean said, proud of the work that we've done and the distance that we've traveled in just a few years from a unified bar to a regulatory agency. It demonstrates not just our commitment to the public and to public protection, but also our, our walking the walk, as they say, and becoming a more accountable and transparent agency to ourselves, to our oversight bodies, to the public we serve, and to those that we regulate. Trust me, I am not saying that we are done. I'm not saying let's pat ourselves on the back and move on. And in some ways, we've just started our work down this path. There is always more that can and that must be done to improve our accountability, to make our work and decisions more transparent, to become more efficient, and to provide greater access to the bar and to legal services. I encourage the more tenured members, the more tenured board members to take a look at the list that I compiled in the written report and think about all the work that you directed and that you contributed to. And I encourage the newer board members to look at the list to understand who we are now and where we came from. And I encourage all of the trustees to continue to think about these important pillars of accountability, transparency, efficiency, and access as we close out the current five-year strategic plan and begin to think about our strategic, strategic goals for the next five years. So I'd like to end with just one final thought. The simple truth is that although the trustees and leadership staff at the bar had a hand in setting the policy and setting the stage for this impressive body of work, we didn't do it, at least not much of it. And so I want to take this opportunity to recognize the 550-plus state bar staff, those who are in fact responsible for carrying out this work under sometimes incredible pressure, timelines, and demands for excellence and insufficient recognition of their incredible accomplishments. So to the staff, I just want to say I thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Donna. That was terrific. And I don't know as a chair if I have to say that I have a point of personal privilege, but I will say that, as we all know, Donna has given tremendous service to the state bar as our interim executive director and has effectively been filling two seats in that role as well as her former role of programs chair. I will have much more to say about Donna when we have a new executive director. So Donna, you will need to be at our next meeting for sure. And, but so, so look forward to that. And then with that terrific report from Donna, I want to move on next to our consent agenda. Is there any board member who would like to remove an item for consent for discussion? Hearing none, that Sarah, do we need a motion to approve consent?
Yes, you do.
All right. Thank you. Jose?
Mr. Chair, it looks like trustee Shelby is raising her hand.
Yes, Melanie.
Good morning. I don't have an item that I'd like to remove, but I do have a comment that I'd like to make and a question that I'd love to get answered. So please let me know when that's appropriate.
Sure, go right ahead.
In relation to item 56, the receipt and filing of the biennial diversity report, I wasn't aware, had there been a meeting where this was discussed? It was such a robust report, the 177 pages. And so I didn't know if it was, if it was practice that it just always ended up on the consent agenda, but I certainly thought something of this great value and importance would be discussed. And so that was really my question.
Donna, do you want to speak to that?
Absolutely. So I had a similar conversation actually with trustee Tony. And, and so I agree with you that this is something that we should highlight. And we, you know, we did a, we announced it when we released the report to the legislature, but it's something that I think would be a great idea to place as an informational item on the next board agenda and to talk about the plan. The, I was really pleased with the effort that was engaged in this year to develop this biennial plan. It is based on the nine concrete objectives. to develop this biennial plan. It is based on the nine concrete objectives that the Board of Trustees had adopted for diversity and inclusion and how we intend to conclude the work on or move forward anyway, the work on those on those items. We had a work group from the Council on Access and Fairness that participated in the development of the report, and I shared the report with the trust, with the Board's diversity liaisons to give them an opportunity to provide input before we submitted this to the Legislature. But I think it does really highlight some very important work of the Board, and I would encourage us to put it on the the agenda just for an informational item.
Sounds good. Melanie, thank you for raising that point. All right, any more discussion on that item, that point before we move back to the consent agenda? All right. So I think we have a motion by Jose. Would anyone like to second?
Second?
Thank you, Melanie. Any doubt there's any discussion, but just in case, I always want to be sure. Raise your hand if you want to speak. Otherwise, Sarah, please take the roll.
Okay, Bratton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Cisneros.
Hi.
Dela Cruz. Dellen.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Gonong.
Yes.
Protula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Hi.
Sol.
Hi.
Stallings. Tony.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Next on our agenda is reports of Board committees. We'll start with the Board Executive Committee. Item 115 is approval of an addition to our 2021 legislative priorities. This is the $20 million in additional funding that I mentioned in my report. Donna, who is going to report to us on this item?
Doug, are you going to lead that discussion?
I'm going to ask our staff who works on legislative issues with me, Linda Katz, to to speak to that one.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome, Linda.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. So this is an item that has, we will be bringing after the initial legislative priorities were adopted in January. The Senate Assembly Judiciary has submitted a budget request for a one-time increase of at least $20 million to the Equal Access Fund to address the need for legal services created by the COVID-19 pandemic. And these funds are distributed through the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission. And this agenda item seeks approval for the for the Bar to send a letter of support in for this budget request.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Any discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, I invite a motion.
Um, with reports from Board committees, you do not need a motion or a second, just a vote.
Uh huh. All right. Thank you, Sarah. So let's go ahead with the roll call then.
Bratton. You're muted. Trustee Bratton. You're still muted. I think he's trying to unmute himself. Let me go on. Chen.
Yes.
Cisneros.
Hi.
Dela Cruz. Dellen.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Gonong.
Yes.
Protula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Hi.
Sol.
Hi.
Stallings. Tony.
Hi.
Bratton.
Yes, sorry.
All right, motion carries.
All right, next. Thank you. Next is the Regulation and Discipline Committee. Is Brandon on?
Brandon had to leave for a few minutes, so he's not here.
Oh, all right.
Maybe you can return to RAD at the end of your committee reports.
Let's defer that. Yes, thank you, Sarah. So we'll pass that item and move to Finance Committee?
No report.
Okay, thank you, Jose. No news is good news, sort of. Next Audit Committee.
No report at this time.
All right. Thank you, Sonia. Sarah, if you'd help me remember when Brandon returns to have us have him do the RAD report, I would appreciate it. Let's move to our business agenda. Item 701 is an update on recommendations to address disparities in the discipline system.
I'm going to I want to kick this off, and I'd like to make sure we get Professor Christopher Robertson promoted. The presentation given by Lisa Chavez, but I wanted to make sure that the trustees had an opportunity to meet Professor Robertson, in particular those of you who have joined the Board since the July presentation that Professor Robertson gave, which was a follow-up to his January presentation. Professor Robertson is the Neil Pike Scholar and Professor of Law at Boston University. He is the author of multiple articles and books. His specialty relates to research on how the law can improve decisions by individuals and institutions. I think that his work really speaks for itself. He's become a real partner in the work that we've been doing here at the State Bar to address concerns about disproportionate discipline in the discipline system. And today, what we're bringing before you is a review. This complies with one of the items on the work plan of the Regulation and Discipline Committee related to following up on the recommendations that were proposed by Professor Robertson at the July meeting of the Board of Trustees and that we've been providing additional updates to the Board on in, I think, every single meeting since that time. We've had updates to the Board on the progress that we've been making on these recommendations. At the September meeting, at the November meeting, we might have missed the January meeting. I don't recall because we devote that time to our planning. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Director of the Office of Research and Institutional Accountability, Lisa Chavez and Professor Robertson.
Hi, good morning. I'm Lisa Chavez. Has Professor Robertson joined us yet? No, okay. It's just that we we thought that this would, we told him to plan on joining us around 10 because we thought we would have about an hour's worth of work before we started. So I just sent him an email asking him to join. So anyway, he wasn't going to participate in the formal presentation. He's going to be available for questions. So let's get through this and let's see how far we get until he's finished. Please, staff, please look out for Professor Professor Robertson. Okay. Okay, so I'm asked, as I said, the purpose of this agenda item is to give you an update on all of the reforms that Professor Robertson recommended in his July 2020 report. The way I'm going to go through this is first to give an overview of the three topics that these potential reforms centered around, and then I will go through the ones that staff have already addressed and completed, and then we will go through the ones that we have started work on for 2021. So just as a reminder, Professor Robertson's potential reforms to address racial disparity centered around three kind of buckets of topics. First is reportable action bank matters. The second has to do with how to deal with complaints closed without discipline, and then finally addressing attorney representation. So let's start with reportable action bank matters. Professor Robertson recommended two reforms that staff researched and actually researched and declined, and we presented that work in fall of 2020. And in so doing, in so doing, we moved forward with OCTC engaging in a proactive preventative approach to RA bank matters by improving and expanding its communication with respondents to receive an RA bank matters notice. With regards to complaints closed without disciplines, there were two potential reforms that staff reviewed and acted upon. The first, and these two were actually related, the choices were to the whole purpose of these two items reforms was to shield staff from complaints that had been closed without discipline. And so one option was to expunge complaints after five years. But staff considered both and recommended that we move forward with potential reform 2.2, which was instead to archive complaints rather than expunging them. And that project was completed. And as a result, we archived nearly 400,000 complaints from staff view. Finally, with regards to attorney representation, staff completed two potential reforms in 2020. The first was to develop a metric that we will be reporting moving forward on the percent of attorneys that have representation. And then the second reform had to do with informing attorneys about who are facing discipline, about the importance of securing counsel, in particular citing the research that showed that in that you have an increased likelihood of discipline without counsel. And we described that letter in particular in a form of Board meeting. So now I'm going to turn back to reportable bank action make matters and address other reforms that staff didn't act upon in 2020 and 2020, but we're working on this year. So this, so let's start with potential reform 1.3. This has to do with Professor Robertson recommended that we that the State Bar revise its guidance to encourage attorneys to use resources to present to prevent trust accounting errors. And the Office of Professional Competence is taking the lead on this work, and it's right now is reviewing its client trust accounting resources, including its handbook. And by May 1st, OPC will have a plan in place regarding both short-term and long-term changes. And Professor Robertson is actually working with us this year on this work, and so he is the one who's been working with OPC on this. Another potential reform that we're working on this year, it has to do with 1.4, where he, Professor Robertson, recommended developing a turnkey kind of banking, checking, bookkeeping, and accounting solution for client trusted funds. He is exploring this option with relevant stakeholders right now, including the Office of Access Inclusion. But one issue that has come up is that we discussed whether whether this reform might be a little bit more applicable to attorney, to an attorney membership organization rather than an attorney licensing licensure agency like the State Bar. Next, a topic, complaints closed without discipline, a potential reform 2.3. Professor Robertson recommended that we develop a proactive, non-disciplinary system to support attorneys who are at high risk for future complaints. And staff has initiated a research plan to understand the allegation patterns and case closure reasons among cases closed without discipline. And these results, which we expect in Q4 of this year, will inform these proactive preventative approaches. And finally, with regards to attorney representation, this is where we've seen really the most exciting work moving forward initiated with Professor Robertson this year. It has to do with two reforms. One is to develop a roster of attorneys who agree to provide pro bono one-hour consultations. And the other is facilitating a sliding fee representation by the private defense bar. And so Professor Robertson, he's exploring this with RAD leadership and relevant stakeholders, including ADDC and different topics that have come up so far during these initial conversations with these stakeholders are how to come up with an attorney means testing mechanism, considering alternatives to pro bono, including a low-bono option, and also the role that professional liability insurance deductible will play in this. And again, this is something that if you have questions about this work in particular, Professor Robertson can answer your questions. And then the last reform that Professor Robertson recommended with regards to attorney representation was had to do with creating a disciplined equity office at the State Bar. And this office would implement reforms, minimize disparities, and ensure that discipline decisions are fair and support unrepresented attorneys. We considered this, and at this time, we just don't have the resources to develop such an office that would focus on this important work, but we're taking advantage of potential opportunities on the horizon, including a new staff member who will be working within DAG's division, who could possibly take the lead on a lot of this work, and also the State Bar Court has expressed interest in developing attorney self-help materials regarding representation. So that's our update for 2021. And does anyone have any questions for now? About what I shared? Looks like we're wrong. Go ahead. Trustee Tony? You're unmuted.
Sorry, I was muted. Mark, Tony, please.
I'm muted. I was muted too. One question about the substance. We have talked about this before, and I don't remember the the answer. But there seemed to have been a protocol that there were some complaints that came in, and if they were closed before, I don't know, if they were closed or no discipline, that the attorneys never found out that there was ever a complaint filed against them. Am I mistaken on that? Can you explain how that works?
You are not mistaken on that. The vast majority of complaints that come into the attorney discipline system are closed without any action being taken and without the attorney being notified. We've been talking about this issue a little bit internally, and I think OCTC staff could probably provide better explanation regarding the the ins and outs of this, but I would note that we get complaints, we get complaints against attorneys. This has come up in part in regard to the Los Angeles Times article. We get complaints against attorneys which have absolutely no relevance to the attorney discipline system and and sometimes many. So say a social media post, which is found offensive, can generate complaints against the attorney. And OCTC will evaluate that complaint and say there's not a, there's not an ethical violation. There's not a contract between a client and an attorney. There's, there are people who are offended by the attorney's actions, but there's nothing for us to do. And so that's, I think that that's perhaps an extreme case of the type of complaint that would come in where OCTC would evaluate it closed at intake. There's not even an investigation. Normally, the attorney will be informed about a complaint against him or her at the point of an investigation being initiated. So that's the inflection point when the attorney is notified. You know what? You've been complained against, and OCTC has judged that complaint to be at least sufficiently meritorious to warrant an investigation, at which point the attorney is notified.
That's reasonable. Thank you for the reminder. It sometimes takes me a minute. My only other comment, Lisa, is I have to tell you that your slideshow presentation was so much easier for me to understand than the report, which I read before the meeting. And I want to thank you for the time you put into that. It was just, I like got it in a way that I had a hard time with the text. And, you know, being that, you know, we're volunteers and have limited time, I just want to continue to encourage you to do that. And anything you can do to get us back before the meeting, that would even be better. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your compliment. It's really important to me to deliver presentations. It's the teacher in me. It's a teacher. Thank you.
So I I don't want to, I wanted to simply note that Professor Robertson has joined us, but I also wanted to mention to Sean, I don't know how closely you're monitoring the the blue hands, but I noticed a that trustee Shelby has her.
Oh, thank you. I didn't see that. Sorry. I'm I'm still sort of in dinosaur mode around Zoom, so I have to apologize. Melanie, first of all, welcome, Professor Robertson. Thank you for joining us. And Melanie, please proceed.
And you're not alone in terms of being a dinosaur. I think we all are still trying to embrace this technology a year out. No, I wanted to underscore Mark Tony's comments, Lisa. Very clear presentation sent us directly to what we needed to see in a very concise manner. So thank you for that. I did have a question, though, as it relates to the creation of the Discipline Equity Office. If you could elaborate on the position that is going to emerge, and in particular, the focus and the priorities. And then my follow-up piece to that is within the strategic planning process, I would imagine that the staff position is an interim kind of role, and so that's probably the second phase of my question. And then my third piece would be within the strategic planning process for 2023 to 2028, would that be a place to begin to discuss the creation of a discipline equity office?
Doug, you want to share a little bit more of the position that that you staffed in your office and the role it can play in this work?
I I have not. I have not thought a lot about. I, I have not, I have not thought a lot about that because this was not one of the recommendations that was approved and as a matter of not having staff to to like manage a full-on discipline equity office. So I don't know that I have a good answer for you. If the question is more about what it would entail and what, what the idea was behind it.
And I maybe I misunderstood. So my impression was that at this point in time, there would not be the creation of a discipline equity office, but there's a staff position that would be focused on these areas. And that was the position I was interested in. But if I was incorrect, if I misunderstood, please let me know.
Got it. No, thank you for that clarification. We do have, we are staff members transferring from another part of the agency. Somebody who I have a lot of confidence in, who I think knows the, knows the State Bar well enough, has this sort of institutional memory to, to take on and sort of individually manage some of the specific projects that we are looking at here. So that's, that's what Lisa was alluding to, more than actually like building out the entire office.
Okay. And then my follow-up question would be, is this, would the strategic planning process that I guess we're going to begin sometime very soon as it relates to 2023 in the next five years, would that be the appropriate place to have a conversation around potentially creating a disciplined equity office?
So I do think that that would be that. I do think that that would be an appropriate place for that conversation to happen. As Dag mentioned, the board did not adopt that recommendation when it was considering Professor Robertson's recommendations in July. But certainly as part of that, that process and you know, that I, I find the timeline of our strategic plan confusing. Because it's 2017 to 2022. And if you count through that, that's six years. I was for a five-year plan. I was informed the first time I questioned that. No, no, it's January 2022. And so that's when the new plan would go into effect in January 22, 2022 for the, for the following five-year, five-year cycle. So yes, that would be, that would certainly be an opportunity to discuss as we look for ways to improve and be more accountable for the discipline system. Is that one of the directions that the board would, 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 would lay out that we were to create such an office?
Thank you.
And I would say another opportunity, oh, Arnie, I see you have a hand up. One second. Another opportunity would be to put this on the agenda of the ad hoc commission on the discipline system. And after Arnie speaks, maybe Ruben might want to speak to that. So Arnie, please go ahead.
I just had a quick question on. I think it's a potential reform 1.4 has to do with having to do with the state bar, creating a sort of a turnkey baking, checking and accounting sort of operation for, for client trust funds. And it made me think of. And obviously that would put the onus on the state. It would, it would cost, you know, us money, those sorts of things like that. But the thought crossed my mind that for small nonprofit organizations, sometimes there are centralized functions that are pooled together for, for their operations, such as human resources functions and accounting, bookkeeping sort of functions. And I wonder, just like we were talking in, in one of the recommendations having to do with pro bono sort of legal services, whether or not it might be, and this was, you know, maybe this doesn't work in this, in this particular setting. But whether or not we could also approach possible CPAs and accounting firms to do similar sort of pro bono accounting operations or low bono accounting operations for certain sets of attorneys.
I think that's an interesting idea. Arnie, I was gonna call out this item too. I was waiting till others spoke. But there's also, I'm second guessing what we did. I guess this was last July. If we think this is something that's more appropriate for an associate, private association, I mean, maybe, maybe this has already been done, but is CLA one of the stakeholders that's mentioned in this item? Because if not, maybe we want to get them involved in this process as well.
There, there's certainly been conversations about, about what the appropriate balance is between CLA and, and this type of function as a supportive activity for the work of attorneys, but how it's also simultaneously protective of the public and protective of the licenses of attorneys who we need to, to to represent members of the public. So.
Yeah, I think it's within our purview for sure. And then, but are we working with CLA at all on this or not?
I have spoken with them about it, but only in passing.
Okay, okay.
Item that they're aware of.
Okay. Sonya, I see your hand. Let me, Ruben was next up and then, and then I'll recognize you.
Hey, Mr. Chair, just by way of brief update, the board will recall that at our last discussion of the ad hoc commission on the attorney discipline system. Trustee Shelby pointed out to us, I think very rightly so, that the, for a commission who, part of whose impetus was meant to address the disparities in the discipline system that were particularly affecting African American, African American male attorneys. There was a noticeable lack of African American male attorneys on the, on the appointees to that commission. As a result, we reopened up the application process and I'm very glad to say that we had quite a robust number of applicants, a very diverse group of applicants from up and down the state. There was a lot of geographic diversity. There was a lot of ethnic diversity, gender diversity, the whole nine yards. And thanks to the, to the good work of Lisa Chavez and our staff. We went through all of those applications very, very carefully and were very pleased to find two additional members to appoint to the commission itself. Mr. Chair, I don't know whether the board has received this information or not, but with your permission, I'd like to just point out the makeup of the commission. Refer to the individuals who've been appointed, thank them in advance for the work that they're embarking upon with, with you and I as chair and co-chair of that commission. Our first kickoff meeting is scheduled for April 30th, which is a Friday. We have a full day of kickoff work planned for, for the commission. And at that point, I'd like to, I'd like to just name the, name the members if you don't mind.
Please do.
Okay, I'm going to go in alphabetical order. Michelle Anderson, who is a prosecutor. Karen Bell, representative of the California Lawyers Association, apropos of the conversation, we just had Ray Winifendura, representative of an affinity bar association, I believe it's Asian Pacific Islander Bar. Shanae Buffington, also an affinity bar representative. Gary Farwell, also an affinity bar representative. Sarah Good from our own Council on Access and Fairness. Jenna Jones of the Medical Board of California. Shailen Joseph, a defense attorney. Jerry Larkin of the National Organization of Bar Counsel. We're going nationwide here. Melanie Lawrence, Melanie, Melanie Lawrence, our own interim chief trial counsel. Edward Geller of the ADDC, which is the Association of Disciplined Defense Counsel. Alexia Mayorga, a defense attorney. The Honorable Curse McGill of the State Bar Court. Stephen Moad of the Office of Chief Trial Counsel. Cynthia Cowell, who is a prosecutor. Ellen Pansky, also the ADDC. Eloise Rosenblatt of the CLA. Linda Schneider of the California Department of Consumer Affairs. Trustee Stallings. And I tried really hard not to get him on there, but I couldn't, you know, I couldn't prevent it. Just kidding, Brandon. The Honorable Fong Wang of the State Bar Court. And Mr. Martin Winfield, a defense attorney. Again, thank you very much to Lisa and our staff for assisting in the recruitment process. Thank you in advance to the members of the commission. Sean and I look very much forward to working with you on all of these important issues. It seems like it's a lot to bite off and chew, but given, given the, the cast of folks that we've identified, I think, I think we're, we're going to do very well. Happy to answer any questions from the, from the board.
Ruben, what do you, thank you for that. What do you think about response to Melanie's comments about including the study of the proposed discipline equity office on the commission?
Yeah.
Say again?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Sean. Go ahead. Finish your question.
No, sorry. I think we spoke over each other. Go ahead.
I was going to say, as, as trustee Shelby was speaking, I, I thought to myself, well, that seems like it might fit within the purview of the commission for sure. There is a draft preliminary work plan that Lisa and I have been working on and you, sir. And so certainly I think that should be added to our next planning meeting as we prepare for April 30th.
Great. All right. Oh, Sonya, Sonya's next up. I think Sonya, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. But then I just realized what one is, thank you, Lisa. I was wondering if we can get copies of those two. If that, that's something that we can have. But that's very, very helpful. On the the banking that, you know, trustee Saul was talking about too, I was wondering if this is some kind of a discussion also that is being being discussed at the regulatory sandbox. You know, group and because that, that is a group where they, they, we would have those third parties. And it's going to be, you know, long, far-fetched at this time yet, but I wonder if that's something that they are also discussing. And at the same time, any involvement with the banking institutions, aside from just having the CPAs. But being from a banking institution, it would be something also that would be interesting. If they will be part of the discussion.
So I can respond as to the regulatory sandbox. I don't believe that issue has come up yet. They are, the closing the justice gap working group is really at the preliminary part of their of their discussions. And I think, you know, largely we would be not sort of dictating what comes in, gets proposed for the regulatory sandbox, but seeing what people propose with some, you know, the, the group would be recommending. Certainly, the group would be recommending, could be recommending parameters for that, but would not be defining particular innovations. And so we couldn't predict if somebody would bring that approach to the sandbox.
All right. Melanie?
I just wanted to say thank you. I really appreciate how quickly the staff jumped on this when it was, and I know it was not an intentional oversight, but when we discussed it in our last board meeting, had the opportunity to meet with Donna and with Lisa and immediately a game plan was put together and just so excited as Ruben walked us through the composition of this, of this working group and feel feel confident that this group is going to really be able to have all of the voices necessary to, to address the task at hand. So thank you for that.
Good. Thank you, Melanie. And thank you for raising that point at our last meeting. All right. Anyone else? I think staff have a proposed resolution to put in front of us. So you can go ahead and do that now. And would anyone like to make a motion?
In my honor to do so, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Rubens. By Brandon. All right. Any further discussion? I can't see, just halfway, I can't see all of your videos right now. So if you have further discussion, use the raise hand feature, please. Or just speak up. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just real quick, I know we have Professor Robertson on the call right now. I don't know, would it be appropriate to turn it over to him for any comments that he would like to make just about recent meetings that he's had, any, any other insights that he has into this agenda item?
Sure, absolutely. Professor Robertson, anything to offer?
Yes, thank you for letting me join for a moment. I don't have a, any presentation prepared. But I will mention that, you know, we're moving forward with, on many of these fronts. And it's just been wonderful to engage with, with people that I think feel a sense of urgency about this. They're taking the issue extremely seriously. They're embracing it in a collaborative way. And so when I call people up and say, hey, can we talk about maybe, you know, changing your fee structure or changing? You know, I expect to get, you know, people to, to be reactive and, and and I'm seeing just the opposite. Instead, I'm hearing, you know, I know this is a problem. We want to be part of the solution. Let's just, you know, figure out how to, to, to resolve this practical issue or, or make sure we're including the stakeholder. So I found the, the engagement with people, both within the State Bar and the stakeholders outside the State Bar to be really invigorating. This is a, this is an exciting time to be working on these range of issues. And I guess the last thing I'll just mention is that, you know, I think it's, I think the, the, the revelation of the, the the disparities in equity, I think, has also created some opportunities to think about more generally about reforms of the process that can help, help it better achieve its goals of protecting the public. So I think it's been a, it's, it's continued to be a real honor for me to, to engage and serve the bar in this way.
Great. Well, thank you for your participation and your insights. We really, it's very meaningful to the moving this process forward.
And Sean, I just wanted to also make a comment in support of this. And also to really commend Professor Robertson and then our very own Dag McLeod on just the enormous amount of work that is being done behind the scenes to work with stakeholders. This is definitely not a, you know, just a board issue. This is something that we're having to collaborate with a wide range of entities and individuals and everybody, just to echo Professor Robertson's statements. Everybody has been incredibly receptive to these potential reforms. And, you know, there has been a wide desire to work with us and to discuss many issues, issues that haven't even come to our minds yet as far as the you have the impacts that potential reforms could have. So very appreciative of the flexibility of Professor Robertson, DAG, and then also the work of the bench bar committee, which is a state bar. State bar court run committee. There's a working group that has been formed in that. And we've had tremendous support from the ADDC, from Office of Chief Trial Counsel, and then the State Bar Court as well. So just thank you for all the work on behalf of RAD and the board. Just thank you to each one of those organizations.
Thank you, Brandon. All right. Any more discussion by trustees? All right, hearing none. Sarah, would you please call the role on the motion on the table?
Ratin.
Yes.
Jen?
Yeah.
Sisneros? Della Cruz?
Yes.
Who was that? Trustee Sisneros? I'm sorry, I can't see the whole screen.
I voted I when you called me. It's Sisneros.
Okay, thank you. Dylan?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Anong?
Yes.
Protula?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Sol.
Hi.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Hi.
And trustee Della Cruz, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here. Okay. I said yes.
Thank you. Sorry, missed that. Motion carries and it's unanimous.
Thank you. All right. I'm now going to return to an item we passed because Brandon has joined us. And it's item 120, report from the Regulation and Discipline Committee.
I'm not going to go through my complete report that I gave to RAD, just because it was rather lengthy. I'll just try and take some of the bullet points and a majority of it was relating to the potential reforms proposed by Professor Robertson. But just to call out a couple of those, we had a very robust meeting with the State Bar Courts Bench Bar Committee. There's a working group that was formed out of that called Bridging the Justice Gap. And we've had great discussions with members of the Defense Counsel, State Bar Court, and then OCTC on three different areas. And that was adding to the State Bar Courts existing online. And that was adding to the state bar courts existing online self-help materials. And so that would go to help individuals who choose to represent themselves or unable to afford counsel, just a more robust set of rules that are targeted to state bar specific prosecution. So there's a lot of rules that are very unique to this, this ecosystem. And so we wanted to have some more targeted materials on that. Judge Purcell and Judge McGill are really taking that on. So wanted to thank them for that. We've had further discussions on what a pro bono panel would look like and what other jurisdictions are doing, and then also the nuts and bolts of a reduced fee program. What that would look like practically and how how we could tie into existing systems to determine if someone needs that reduced fee in order to get counsel. So had very productive meetings. Just want to call out a couple of things. State Bar Court continues to conduct virtual hearings and provide litigants with a forum for due process in which to litigate these very important matters. And I would note that across California, we have, we're still continuing to deal with the COVID pandemic and the courts are in a you know, I think it ranges from county to county. Kern County has been back up to full steam since May of last year. And I know some jurisdictions aren't quite there yet. So I would commend State Bar Court for taking advantage of the technology and to quote Stacy Spector and some of some of you may remember her, with the winds of technology at our back. We have continued to hold those hearings and provide that due process for litigants. I highlighted a couple of different things that RAD oversees. One is the 2201 program, and that's the conflict program and some of the reforms that has been implemented by the board since 2016, including changing the the standard for recusal from a judicial conflict of interest to a more appropriate prosecutor's conflict of interest standard. We professionalized the conflict panel system by paying lawyers who have and who have experience in the area of ethics, particularly legal ethics. We have a full-time administrator and have incredible talent in that position. Formerly Ed McIntyre, and then now currently Jeff Del Cerro, just to name a few. So this is an evolving process and we continue to work towards continued confidence in our in our justice system here in the state bar. And then I also gave a brief report on the civility project. This is chaired by Justice Brian Curry, the Second District Court of Appeal. We're taking on three projects in that a proposed rule of professional conduct relating to uncivil behavior and other options that judges might have terrain in civility in their courtrooms. That's being headed up by Heather Rosing, a former Board of Trustees member. And then also the Honorable Catherine Bacall from the San Diego Superior Court. I'm heading up along with Judge David Wolf from Kern County Superior Court, a group that's looking at requiring all lawyers, regardless of when they were sworn in, to affirm to uphold the civility objectives of Rule 9.7, which states, as an officer of the court, I will strive to conduct myself at all times with dignity, courtesy, and integrity. And then the third group is being chaired by Justice Brian Curry and is exploring the addition of one hour of mandatory civility training and the drafting of civility curriculum that has the most impact. And this is really in response to something that we've seen, you may have seen in the papers with people complaining about their lawyers fighting with each other. There's tons of memes out there. There's you know, comic strips about that as something that I think is expected in the legal profession, but there has to be limits to that. To that aggressive behavior, and that's what we're looking at. We're looking at ways to improve the public's confidence in lawyers as a whole and figuring out ways to attack that from multiple angles. So as always, RAD continues the work of the state bar. And I just wanted to recognize the tremendous sacrifices and flexibility that have been demonstrated by state bar staff. Everywhere from managers, lawyers, support staff, investigators and judges in the midst of this pandemic to continue the work of the state bar to protect the public. So on behalf of the Regulation Discipline Committee, thank you to each staff member for the sacrifices that really only you know you've had to to make during this time. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Brandon. All right. I'm gonna take up item 702 next. And just for the information of everyone in the meeting, I'll plan to take a brief break after this next item. So we'll move to item 702, which is a proposed new state bar rule governing client security fund payment plans. So let's proceed with that item. Looks like Suzanne Grant is about to join us.
Hi, this is Suzanne Grant. I'm an Assistant General Counsel in the Office of General Counsel. I have with me Gagan Kerr, who should be joining, and she will actually be presenting the item on behalf of OGC.
Okay, very good.
I think she's on now.
Good morning.
Good. Good morning, Gagan.
I'm an, as Suzanne mentioned, my name is Gagan Deep Kaur. I'm an Assistant General Counsel with the Office of General Counsel. And I'll be presenting this item. Working with the Board of Trustees, Sean Saleg and Jose Cisneros, the staff drafted and proposed a new CSF rule to allow payment plans for outstanding CSF interest for a group of 120 licensees who owed CSF debt as of December 18, 2020, and had that CSF debt added to their 2021 or 2022 license fees or fee statements. The rule is attached to this item as attachment A, and it contains the criteria to qualify for a payment plan as well as the key terms and conditions that will be included in the payment plan agreements. This rule is necessary because after providing an initial notice of the outstanding CSF debt, the state bar did not provide subsequent notices to these licensees of the outstanding debt, did not add that CSF debt to the licensee's license fee or fee statement, and also did not make proactive attempts to collect that debt. As a result, the CSF reimbursements for these licensees accrued significant interest. And the reason for not making proactive efforts to collect this debt was because the state bar was prioritizing debt collection efforts against disbarred and resigned attorneys. The rule proposes a way for, the rule affords an equitable relief related to the accrued interest and allows these licensees an option to enter into a payment plan for that interest accumulated over the years. The staff requests that the rule be approved as an emergency rule while we await for public comment for its permanent adoption to allow these licensees as much time as possible to enter into a payment plan to avoid suspension for non-payment and collections efforts against them. The reason for this is because the deadline to pay the license fee has passed. The deadline to recommend that these licensees be recommended for suspension for non-payment is approaching. And we only had handful of licensees who have actually made the payment. The staff evaluated other options in lieu of requesting an emergency rule, including extending the suspension date for non-payment for these 120 attorneys, so the rule would be adopted on a permanent basis. After consideration, staff concluded that it warranted to move forward with an emergency rule because of the administrative difficulties in extending that deadline just for this group of 120 attorneys because of the limitations that are also in our current systems. Staff also evaluated how to address any conflicts that may arise between the emergency rule that's adopted and the permanent version of this rule after we receive public comments. And staff concluded that we can address any issues by making it clear in our notices to these licensees as well as including language in the and the payment plan agreement, that any payment plan agreement will be, will need to conform to the final version of the rule after we receive public comment. Staff intends to bring the final rule to the board at the May meeting for approval. That's basically my presentation on the rule. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address those.
Hey, Mark, I had a question.
Mark, Tony.
Yes. I I appreciate that this is a proposal that's designed to remedy a previous oversight in terms of communications with the, you know, with this group of of attorneys who owe a debt but are but are still practicing. And I think it's reasonable. I suppose I, you know, my my issue is I don't understand the emergency here. Emergency, I view as something where someone's health or safety is at risk. That's why you adopt an emergency rule to protect something really egregious from happening that's irreversible. Irreversible damage. That's how I think of the term emergency. And I just don't see any emergency here. I, 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 I think that, you know, if it's a timing issue, the only thing I see an urgency, which I think is different from an emergency. Okay, I, I, I don't, I don't like to conflate the two. And the urgency has to do with deadlines approaching. And because it's a, you know, you know, because it's that, I would rather either have the deadline suspended or not enforced until a later date. You know, I like that there's a 30-day public comment period for the permanent rule. I think it's better to go through that process and not run the risk of having one interim rule and then a permanent rule being released a couple of months later that may be different. And that I hope is different because there's public comment and there was a response to public comment. That's my presumption that of a good process. So I would, I would I like what you're doing for the permanent rule. I think it's appropriate. I do not support the emergency rule.
Thanks, Mark. I think that that's, that those are good points. I think the the issue that we were dealing with is the fact that we're running up against the suspension deadline. And there's the concern that, you know, we, to make a special process for these, these select group of attorneys presented a sort of administrative burden for such a small, a small group. And we thought it made sense to keep moving forward with the with the rule to get the payment plans at least started. And then provided there are public comments and the rule does change, we can always amend any payment plans because we don't expect to, there to be that many, considering there's such a small number of licensees. But certainly, you know, it's really a question for the board whether you want to adopt, whether you want to adopt it as an emergency rule or whether we want to adopt it permanently and extend the deadline.
Let me ask, so if we, I think this is partially driven by the schedule for our board meeting because we don't have, our next regularly scheduled meeting is May. I suppose we could do this through executive committee or a special board meeting with the timing on that work, Suzanne?
So I believe if we left, if we had 30-day of public comment, we'd be looking at, and we got it out, let's say, we we got it out today. We could after after the board meeting. We could get it. What would that be? We'd be looking at early, early April. So yeah, if we if we did, I mean, that would, that would save a month. So that is a possibility. If the XCOM or committee could meet earlier, that could be, that could be a possibility.
Looks like it would be late April. And what's the, what's the key deadline that we're trying to avoid?
June, June 30th is the date of suspension by the Supreme Court. So they get recommended in May. And then the Supreme Court issues an order saying they, you know, they'll be suspended as of, as of June, July 1st. So then they have until June 30th.
Okay.
Chair, I'd just like to draw your attention to a couple of raised hands. I believe Ruben has been raised for a moment.
Thank you. I'm being a dinosaur again.
Trustee Duran.
Brandon?
I think Ruben was ahead of me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Brandon. But I, I hear what trustee Tony is saying, but I have to say that it sounded to me like the staff has done quite a bit of work, including with trustee Cisneros to fashion a remedy here that makes sense given the time constraint and sort of, quite frankly, given as much work that has built up to where we find ourselves today. And so semantics aside, I feel like I'm disinclined to to go against what staff's recommending here. I'm obviously interested in what everyone else has to say, but as it stands today, as it stands now, rather, I support staff's recommendation.
Vanessa, did you have?
Yes. So two things, you know, this is a limited circumstance situation, which is different than when we do long-term, you know, the long-term process of public comment for a permanent rule. But the other thing I wanted to mention is sometimes but let's not assume we can make the June deadline because sometimes you send something out for public comment, you get responses, staff has to take time reviewing as they should and chronicling and reporting back. And then sometimes the public comment, as it should, affects the rule and you have to revise the rule and then send it back out for more. And in our experience, these things can, you know, go on and repeat themselves over time. So why this is an emergency situation is because we have a tight deadline that the formal public comment, the normal public comment, this is rare that we do this on this board may not accommodate the required, the needs of the bar to deal with this, this unique situation.
Hey, Brandon.
All right, thank you. And I, I just wanted to speak to Mr. Tony's point. You know, on the Regulation and Discipline Committee side, we have had to face a series of emergency rules based upon the pandemic and it's always something that we've tried to balance with, you know, are we responding? Are we reacting? Are we taking the the time to consider all of the issues? And I think just in reviewing this agenda item, I think that staff has responded in a very equitable way to meet some of those concerns. And if we need to change the rule down the road, then I think we've certainly done that in the past and we can continue to to be responsive in that fashion. So I do support staff's recommendation.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would move the resolution.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Brandon, you have your electronic hand up. I think it was just for your prior comment. Okay, thank you. And please either speak up or use your, the raise hand function because I cannot see all the videos because we're doing screen sharing.
Chair, who moved it? Was that Brandon Stone?
Yes, and second by Ruben.
Thank you.
All right, please take the roll.
Rotten.
Yes.
Chen.
Yeah.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Della Cruz.
Yes.
Dellen.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Konong.
Yes.
Protula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Sol.
Aye.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Nay.
Motion carries.
All right. So I think we have earned a break. It's 10:33. Let's come back at 10:45. See you then. Right, thank you. All right, welcome back. All right, let's proceed with item 702. All right, let's proceed with item 703, State Bar Metrics Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see Lisa Chavez is joining us. I will open the item. Lisa, if you can, display the PowerPoint.
She gave me some slideshow. Okay, does everyone see my screen?
You're in the presenter view.
Oh, um. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, so I'm sure, do you see my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay.
With the note, we see it with the notes.
Right, exactly. So I'm trying to just make a slideshow.
Yeah.
So that's what I hit. And then now it goes like the, now I, on my screen, I see the entire thing. What do you see?
Yeah, we're in the presenter view.
Okay, is that okay?
Well, it contains the notes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there's an odd thing that I've never seen, a presentation which has the next slide on the right along with notes.
I think you want to.
Disable presenter view.
If you push F5, that should. Do it.
Okay, I think I fixed it.
Looked good.
How about now?
Very nice.
Better? Do you see notes?
It's the same presenter view.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
We could, Lisa, if you want, we could pass this item and you could work with IT or something to fix this and we can come back to you.
Okay.
If you'd like.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I'm so sorry. I don't think I'm doing anything different than I did with my last presentation. Was the last presentation I did okay?
It was, but we were seeing the same thing. We were seeing the next slide and there were fewer notes, so it was, it was less clear.
You can disable presenter view. If you go to the slideshow tab, there's a box that you can check to disable presenter view. So that when you present the slideshow, it doesn't show the presenter view.
I'm sorry, why don't I fix this? And is that okay, Donna, with you if I try to fix this?
We can come back to it.
Yeah, no problem at all, we said.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so let's move on to item 704. That which is approval of planned updates to the state bar website.
Teresa Ruano is joining us right now. She will be providing that.
Enter in the room.
There we go. There's Teresa. Teresa, head over to you.
Welcome, Teresa. You know, before you start your presentation, I just want to compliment you on these materials and the amount of work that you put into, you or your team put into identifying what the changes will be on the website. I found it really easy to follow and I know that's because you put a lot of work into it. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning trustees. I'm here to talk about the attorney search and the attorney profile on our website, slightly different topic than your usual. First, what I'd like to do is just briefly review what you decided in January 2020, not January 2021. So we're going back a little over a year for the benefit of those who were either not yet trustees or for people who may be listening in. Then we'll look at where we are today briefly. And then we will go into the recommendations for what this may look like in the future with your approval. So the, the item in January 2020 was a revision to the rules of the state bar that detail what attorneys can and must report to the state bar. And when it first was submitted through the programs committee in the fall of 2019 to public comment. And then again, when it came back in January 2020, what, what we learned, I think, from the public comment was that there, that people are very invested in what appears on attorney profiles in the state bar website. And there were some concerns and some confusion between what the rule actually does, which is not say anything about what displays by the state bar on these, on the website. And, and what is actually collected by the state bar as a part of an attorney record for other purposes. So again, with the materials that were submitted for this meeting, we highlighted in the background, the list of items that are collected under the rule. And then the list of items that are not intended for display. So you could see the list here is the items that are collected and displayed on the attorney profile. And some of these are new with the implementation of the rule. For example, in the past, there, there hasn't been a place to display an attorney's professional website. And as, you know, as we know, websites have now been in use for many, many years. So that is, that is a new addition to the proposal that the staff has made. Going back again through the process, when it was first submitted before public comment, the staff made recommendations saying what actually displays on the website is not part of the rule, but here's what we recommend. When it returned in January 2020.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I have a request from a trustee for you to enlarge the display a little bit or zoom in. So it's, because it's a little hard to read.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt. Apologize.
No problem. When it returned in 2020, we had adjusted those recommendations somewhat. But they were still, we tried to still again make clear that the rule itself does not dictate. This is a separate matter, matter of policy. During the, during the public, public comment process, and again, at the January 2020 meeting, I think that one of the things that, that was highlighted as an area where staff recommendation for what would benefit the public and other concerns about whether presenting that information would be misleading to the public had to do with self-identified areas of practice. Some of the other things that we are proposing to add, I think, are very useful and are less of an issue of balance. And so when the item came before the board in January 2020, the board asked us to return with mockups of how these items would appear. And so that is why we're here today. So at this point, what I'd like to do is to sort of take a look at where we are today. And the easiest way to do that is just to look at the website and look at the attorney search function. Interestingly, I checked the analytics and this webpage, the attorney search webpage, actually gets more page views than our homepage. So it is an important aspect of what we provide to the public. And if you go to this page initially, you see the very same thing that is on our homepage, which is just simply a search box where you can put in an attorney's name or bar number. However, if you click the link to advanced search, what's on our webpage currently enables you to search by your location, search by certified specialties, search by languages spoken. And this is sort of our entryway. So we're at the point in a remodeling television show where you're walking through the building as, the home as it exists, so to speak. One of the, the accidents of previous remodelings is that you can search on languages spoken and you can receive a list of those who have reported languages spoken. But when you arrive at an attorney's profile itself, languages spoken don't, doesn't currently appear. So we'll take a quick look now at just what a standard garden variety attorney profile looks like. And, and well, we'll use Donna as an example. She's done this herself in past meetings, so I'm assuming it's okay to do. Okay, so here we have the, an active licensee profile with, with fairly limited information. And as, again, I think in the materials, you'll see that there are, there are a great number of variations of this. What an inactive attorney profile looks like is somewhat different. What an attorney profile for an attorney with a disciplinary history or who is currently suspended because of administrative issues, those look different. But what we, what we tried to do in thinking about incorporating some of this new information was sort of look at this, this, this range of different attorney profile issues. And since we're going to be adding information, try to group the information in ways that would be useful. And, and while we have the walls open, so to speak, in the remodeling, fix some of the other issues that have kind of crept into this from successive programming changes over time. Okay. So you can see here at the bottom, there is a section that always appears that relates to California Lawyers Association sections, for example. If, if an attorney had certifications, they would also appear. All right, so going on to the mockups. So let's stop here for just a moment because again, this, this addresses what I was starting to talk about. Our primary goals obviously are to implement the proposed changes that were carried along as recommendations when the rule changes were, were approved in January 2020. In addition to that, because of the discussion that occurred during public comment and in the, in the public comment at the January 2020 meeting and the discussion that trustees had regarding this particular issue about self-reported practice areas and the potential for that to either be helpful to the public or misleading to the public because the state bar would simply be carrying the information along that an attorney provides, not validating it anyway or evaluating it anyway. Is there a way to kind of achieve that balance by appropriate disclaimers and informational text that basically tells people what they're getting if they, if they look at the information about self-reported practice areas? And then the secondary goals are the things that I mentioned that are sort of like, wow, we're doing this remodeling project. Why don't we look at improving the user experience, clear away clutter, more logically group the, the content, make navigation less confusing because there's a lot of links in those profiles and some of them go to help content and some of them go to other places on the website. And some of them that should be help content are actually navigating you to another place on the website. So we decided that we would try to squeeze in as much of the improvement as we could so that when the new and improved profiles debut, they really will be new and improved. So those are sort of our, those are sort of our secondary goals in this process. So let's look, look first at the, what we propose for the change in the page that I just showed you, which is the attorney search. And, and here we, we are very, very simply proposing one additional field. Keep scrolling, Luisa, and you'll see it's all the same until we get to the very bottom. That's the old one. So now we're going to the new one. Okay, one, once minor change above there, it has to do with a user comment about special characters, which is something we just proposed adding, but please, please keep going, keep scrolling. Self-reported practice areas would be the new field added at the bottom of the list. And this would require sort of a two-step on the user's part. In other words, if, if you click that you want to search within self-reported practice areas, as a user, you would be taken to a disclaimer checkbox, scroll down a little bit further, please. And you'd have to basically acknowledge that you've seen it. And this disclaimer text is also proposed to appear actually on the search results page and on individual profiles so that not only does it make clear that the state bar is not, is not verifying or validating this information, but it links to the other sources that are available for people who are possibly using this simply to search for legal help. So certified lawyer referral services, the certified specialties themselves, Law Help CA for legal aid. And are the whole section of our website that is geared to the members of the public with sort of informational resources about how to go about searching for an attorney and how, how to, how to work with attorneys constructively, et cetera, et cetera. So that's attorneys, that's the attorney search page that we propose as a result of these changes. Then the results page that would appear, this is the current version of that page. Basically, it, you know, if you've made a request, you might get 354 randomized results, depending on how you've filtered down. Keep scrolling. So the revision here, basically, it would have that same disclaimer conditionally for any search that had been done that included self-reported practice areas. Okay? And now we go into the variations on the profiles themselves. So this is our garden variety profile. The new version of this, setting all those many detailed comments aside, what we've tried to do is to group the contact information in a little bit more compact way at the top and include a professional website if there is one. And if there is one, this would, this would invoke an exit screen. So that, that notice text that is in the right column would be displayed in a new tab before you leave the state bar website. So again, because of the, the addition of navigating people off to a website, again, that we may not have validated or verified, we are thinking through how to, how to make that exit with the appropriate disclaimer.
Teresa, if I could just, as a quick reminder to the board, one of the reasons that the board included in the rule that lawyers are required to provide their professional website if they have one, dealt with issues of identity theft and individuals assuming the identity of an attorney and soliciting clients. And if they have, the hope being if they have their professional website on the state bar's profile page, and that that would be an opportunity if you, if you reached out to a lawyer and they had a different website than was here, that that would be an indication that maybe there's something amiss. You click to their website, it may have their photo and you could, you could see if it's that person. It may not, that's, you know, up to them. But it was a tool to help protect against identity theft.
Can I just add to what Donna said, which is, I think this is a very nice compromise because when we last discussed this, there was this kind of a debate about whether to require or permit lawyers to give us a picture for the state bar website. So this is a very elegant solution to that. And the other thing I would say is that this type of impersonation has happened. So it's an important thing to think about.
Sean, if I could just echo what you just said, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I know personally, personally, lawyers at private law firms who have had that happen to them in the recent past. So I certainly appreciate, as you said, Sean, this elegant fix for that.
Sean?
It happened to me, by the way, in case anyone cares.
Sean, I have a question.
Yes, Sonia. Yes.
I have a question on the page before this. You know, when you, there are attorneys who are licensed in different states. That would, we also have any link or information to where they are? I mean, if there are any disciplinary actions in another state? Is that something that our website has? There are times when.
No, and staff can supplement this or correct me if I get it wrong. We only list discipline in California. However, when a lawyer is licensed in more than one jurisdiction, let's say California. let's say California and New York, if New York imposes discipline, then, um, there are methodall that that jurisdiction will notify the other jurisdictions in which the lawyer is licensed. So here, California. And then there's something called reciprocal discipline, where the OCTC goes through a process with the state bar court regarding, uh, whether to discipline the attorney based on the facts in the, uh, in say the New York proceeding and what level of discipline and so on. So, um, it, in an indirect way that would take some time, eventually the discipline in the other state would most likely appear on this, the state bars website.
Okay. I'm not really asking for it to be, you know, to be part of the decision, but just information about that, right? That you're saying eventually it will show up that they have, there, there is something pending.
In, in most cases, not necessarily every case, but most cases, because generally there is reciprocal discipline imposed in California when there's discipline in another jurisdiction.
And, and I, I think this, um, you know, that was certainly a question that we had received from, from folks as we were putting the rule out to public comment. Should we be, you know, asking to include the multiple jurisdictions in which people are licensed? And this is where our discussion at the prior board meetings really, uh, was focusing on the line between the role of the state bar as regulatory agency and no longer as an agency, uh, part of whose mission is to promote the professional interests of attorneys. And, and so we questioned sort of each data element. What, what is the benefit of this data, data element as part of our regulatory function? What is the, the importance of this data element as part of getting information, useful information out to the consumer? And putting, putting information about, uh, people's undergraduate schools, putting into information about the multiple states in which they may be licensed, really felt, uh, generally to the board and staff as we were recommending this, uh, as things that fell more on, along the line of, um, of advancing the professional interest of lawyers. Um, and, and, um, and I think this is, this is a helpful discussion. Certainly for all of this, I do, um, want to note, right? The, the board did adopt the rule in terms of what was going to be public information, what was going to be required, uh, previously. And, and the key point for why the board asked for this, um, presentation to come back, these mockups to come back, is I think the board wanted the opportunity to revisit the question of the display and the searchability of, um, practice area. That was a, that was a big issue. And the board authorized staff to go forward with the plan for what would be, um, uh, displayed and what would not be displayed, but really wanted the opportunity to take a look how we would craft the, uh, the necessary caveats for self-reported practice area and thinking sort of once again about the searchability of, um, in the website by practice area.
Uh, my, my question was basically toward, not, not for advancing or promoting the attorney, but more on the discipline, discipline part of it, information on that. Just to protect the public also, if there's something that they, you know, in another jurisdiction, they had, uh, you know, some malpractice or anything, but not necessarily to just promote the attorney that they have the different practices or, or.
And, and we do, as Sean mentioned, we get that information from other jurisdictions. And, uh, our Office of Chief Trial Counsel uses that information in deciding how to proceed with, um, reciprocal discipline, disciplining them in California. The fact of their discipline, um, absent us disciplining them in California, the fact of their discipline in another state does not show up on the website.
And I think that one of the added things that I, I perhaps should have said, of course, is that this is always going to be a two-step process. In other words, when a decision is made, as it was in January, for what information is to be collected mandatory or optional, systems have to be built to collect that information and then channel it to this page. So the first part of that work is being done. And actually, Hotem Kolic is with us if there are questions about timing. Once the systems are available to collect the information, then we have to make, obviously make the programming changes to, uh, display the information. The attorney profile page, just so you know, it's one of the more complicated, uh, publishing efforts that we do because it does draw from at least two different data sources. It draws from the disciplinary system data and it draws from attorney records. So the changes, um, the, the changes have to be planned and, and programmed. It's not, it's, it's not a simple process. So, um, we can keep going. I think the next thing that I just wanted to draw attention to is that what we have proposed for, uh, grouping the information that is supplementary to, uh, who is this attorney? And what are the special details about them that I might want to know? Is we're, we're proposing a dropdown panel. So by clicking more about this attorney, um, please, please scroll down. You would see an expand panel. This is, this is partly because the rule changes and the optional information that may be provided now and should display or by, by virtue of the recommendations that have been made, we are planning to enable display of are enough that this method of display, we feel is, is a more logical grouping. The other thing that we have to be concerned about when we're designing changes to our websites is, um, responsive design for, uh, for example, for looking at this information on your phone. So a, a dropdown panel like this works better for responsive design. So what we've tried to do is to group that supplemental information in a logical way. So it, some of the things that currently display on the main, um, profile would be moved into this expand panel as well as the new material that, uh, Rule 2.2 enables us to display. Certified legal specialists, specialties, California Lawyers Association sections. This would be where self-reported practice areas would be displayed. And again, with the, the disclaimer language, um, that list could be long. So we have to sort of think through how to accommodate something that might have multiple topics. And then, uh, language is spoken, as I said before, by virtue of a, um, a vestige of a programming change that was done. These don't currently display on the profile, but they should. By virtue of one of the changes that Rule 2.2 enables, attorneys will be able to tell us if they themselves speak a language or if the language is spoken with, by their staff. So we're, we are proposing making that visible to the public. And then we just decided to move the law school here as well because it is, I think, um, within the logical grouping of this supplemental information. So that is what we're proposing for, uh, a display methodology that would, um, that would present this information in a logical grouping. Going on. The next, um, the next changes that are here are more of the, while we have the walls open type. We're trying to make the disciplinary section a little bit easier under, to understand and provide help, uh, help pop-ups in a way that would declutter the page. So this is unrelated to the Rule 2.2 changes, but it's ways that we're trying to make the, the amount of, um, links and differentiation between links that are help content and links that are navigating off to different sections of the site a little bit more clear. Going on. The next variation has to do with inactive attorneys. So, um, just go ahead and scroll to the proposal. This is where the, um, the, the changes that were enabled by Rule 2.2 allow for an inactive attorney to designate only one piece of contact information if they prefer. So, um, we're proposing that we declutter their, their, um, attorney profile. And if they've only provided an email address, that is all that would display in the contact area of the profile. The same changes, uh, would be relevant for an expand panel. The other thing that we are trying to do in some of the changes that we're proposing is that in the current design, the same dark red is used for sort of a, an alert text as is used for links. And this is sort of a user interface, no, no. And so we are, um, we have looked for a way to differentiate what we consider to be alert text from links. And for various user interface and accessibility reasons, we've kind of landed on using red with a, uh, with white text as an alert methodology rather than the same red that's used with links.
Teresa, let me supplement that just for, uh, for our newer trustees and the public. What Teresa's talking about with the alert is if you could scroll up to more to the top of the page, please. Thank you. Um, so in certain situations, the board has directed that a kind of a very prominent box pop-up on some licensees pages called consumer alert. And, um, I don't remember offhand some examples of that. Maybe Donna, you might?
Um, if we've, uh, filed a notice of disciplinary charges alleging that somebody has misappropriated more than $25,000 of client money.
All right. So there you go. I think there's like four or five categories, but they're situations that the board has determined present a special risk to the public and therefore are called out as a, as a consumer alert. So that's the notice that Teresa is saying we should, um, having, I guess, use a different color and a different way presenting the red. So which is, which is a good idea. So in my opinion. So, thank you.
And I noticed that, uh, Trustee Shelby has her hand raised.
Oh, thank you. Melanie, yes.
Yes. Um, just question in terms of context. When, when you all were having this conversation previously, was there any, um, discussion around kind of demographic information as it related to ethnicity, gender and orientation? I know that as people apply to different, um, subcommittees and that that information is tracked in some areas. And so was curious about that.
Um, no, we didn't discuss that, I don't believe.
Um, well, we, we did sort of, and we collect that information through our annual attorney census. Um, but we do not attach it to the public profile. Um, you know, one of the interesting things when we, when we talked about, um, identity theft, we had talked about not just including the website, but also including the photo. And there was a concern that, um, that was raised, I think during public comment, which, uh, which we thought was, was very well, uh, was, was well-taken that people might make a, that might, might make a judgment about, about somebody based on their photo. Um, what they see and what they believe based on the physical characteristics that they notice. And so we, we didn't want to populate the attorney profile with the demographic information, but it is information that we collect annually as part of the attorney census.
Okay. No, and I ask that, I appreciate that. I asked that question because there's a counter opinion to that as well, right? If I'm looking for a Latina woman attorney, um, how would I be able to search and find that, right? And so I certainly see both sides of that art, uh, I see both sides of that conversation. The other piece and, and Sean just brought this up. And so now from a curiosity standpoint, the consumer alerts, what are the four alerts that would be flagged on a profile?
There's actually a, I think, a fairly lengthy list that's more than four. Uh, I, I'm not the expert, but, um, the consumer alerts, um, actually extend in, into administrative areas as well. So there can be in a consumer alert box for, that explains why, uh, an attorney is on suspension if they haven't paid their fees or, or, or completed other administrative, administrative responsibilities.
Yeah. Dag, maybe if you or, uh, another staff person could look in the rules and see if we can locate that. I assume it's in the rules of the state bar.
Um, actually, we can, we will send a, we will send information to Trustee Shelby and the rest of the board. There was an agenda item, uh, that the board approved. It wasn't a rule change, I don't, I, I don't believe, but in, um, recommendations from staff that had the, the laundry list of the different consumer alerts to make sure that people who were seeking out a lawyer understood that this person is suspended, they're ineligible to practice law, or that, that although we have not, um, there has not been an adjudication yet, there is a concern of a sufficient level that we have filed a notice of disciplinary charges that maybe they have, uh, misappropriated funds from clients or done other things. But we can provide you, uh, the link to that, um, that agenda item. I would note that there are a few of those items which have not yet been implemented due to various technological considerations. And, uh, leadership in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel are, um, coming back, are developing an alternative proposal, which we'd probably be bringing to the board, um, fairly soon. Um, if we are, uh, if, if we end up, um, uh, eliminating potentially a couple of the previously approved, uh, consumer alerts. So we will have a, a chance to talk about this more thoroughly at that point.
Thank you. And then, um, Melanie, uh, so, uh, you, uh, we, we can maybe save this for the discussion later, but I think we should, um, because I don't want to further interrupt Teresa's presentation, but I think we should bookmark the issue about the demographic information that you flagged and discuss it later, if that's okay with you.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So we've talked about a turn, uh, inactive, uh, licensees. Then the last, um, mockup here, and this is the example that displays the consumer alert. So when an attorney has a disciplinary history, the volume of content on the profile can expand quite dramatically. So, um, this is an example put into the, uh, the set for you to kind of get an idea of what that looks like currently and also what, uh, the rearrangement of some of these, of the, um, elements. But again, not necessarily because of Rule 2.2 changes, but sort of as a companion to that, uh, would look like. So if we go to the proposed version of this, you see we're scrolling through like two or three pages for one profile. Um, the, the, the grouping for contact information would obviously be similar to others. The consumer alert box, we've basically, the current sign, for whatever reason, places those consumer alert boxes above the person's name and status. So just proposing moving it below name and status so that you can associate it with the name, especially there are actually some, very few profiles that have multiple consumer alerts on them. So you don't see the person's name until you actually get through the alert boxes. Scrolling down into the disciplinary history, we're again proposing just some cleanup that has to do with access to, uh, information that would help people understand what they're looking at in this section and how to get to, um, the documents that relate to discipline. Again, a transitional issue. Keep, keep scrolling.
Teresa, let me just supplement that just again, as a point of information. You alluded to this, that, uh, uh, focus of the board's discussion about the format of this page in the past uh, was that previously, if I recall correctly, the information about discipline, the detailed information that you're seeing right here would not appear on the page that first presents itself when you search the attorney. The, the consumer would have to scroll down to see it. And so that's partly why there had been changes about what appears immediately below or next to the licensee's name, because we want that, we want to be sure that's flagged immediately when the page comes up on someone's, uh, after someone's search.
Yes. So keep scrolling. There, there's a section below this. Have we, have we hit, hit the end? Luisa?
Yes, we have. Sorry.
So this somehow got cut off because basically currently there are two elements. If you go back to the old, um, version. Scroll up.
Sorry, give me one second.
If you go back to the old version of a profile underneath the table for disciplinary history is a section that appears on some profiles that provides documents, uh, that are, uh, linked directly from state bar court. And that is a vestige of how the, that information was presented in the past before the, the launch of the state bar court case search portal, which enables people to go and get the documents. That still appears on some profiles because there are still some of those cases that were active at the time the profile launched. And until those cases are completed, the document links, scroll up a little bit. So this, this section where people go up a little bit more, there's a little heading. where people go up a little bit more, there's a little heading above it says state bar court cases. So that little block appears on some profiles. Now scroll down and and there's a there's a block that is the the gray box that we added at the time that the state bar court case search functionality was launched in May 2019. And the basic purpose of this was just to try to give people the the information that they would need in order to access the documents through the portal. We had hoped, I think, when the portal launched that we might be able to streamline streamline this and make it easier, but technically it isn't possible for us to link directly from the profile into a docket and into a document on the docket. So the so there's some cleanup recommendations. I'm a little bit concerned if the if those somehow got cut off because although it again is not directly related to rule 2.2, it is among the changes that we are proposing we make just to make it a little bit clearer and easier for people to understand. You have to go to the portal, you have to put SBC, and then you have to put paste the case case number. It's not ideal, but it is. It is what we have to work with currently. And we want to make it possible, obviously, for people to access documents if if they would like to do so. So the the help, the help files, the help pop up boxes and some streamlined instructions for this box were among the changes we were presenting today. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions and turn it back to you. So Luisa, Sean, Mr. Chair?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. First of all, Teresa, I complimented you on your presentation. I thought it was really terrific. So thank you. There's a procedural point I want to raise before we turn to discussion of the merits, and that is I don't see a red line of proposed changes to rule 2.2, but the resolution, the proposed resolution refers to changes to that rule.
So the rule 2.2 changes that that the the material refers to are basically the ones that were approved in January 2020. We are not proposing any further changes to rule 2.2.
Oh, because hang on a second. I thought I saw some because the rule says. Oh, I see.
The rule does not discuss the display.
Sorry, I was looking at the laundry list of things that each lawyer is obligated to provide to the bar. So and never. So that's a never mind. You've answered my question. Thank you. All right, let me throw it open for discussion and including Melanie, the point you raised, if you'd like to discuss that further, please feel free.
Certainly, I was just, you know, as I was listening to the, thank you for the presentation, by the way. As I was reviewing it in preparation for this meeting and just listening, you know, I was thinking about in terms of when you're looking for mental health, you can you can identify people based on demographics, based on gender, based on ethnicity, and I as the search ability is there for language, I was just curious to it. It sounds like demographic information never resonated. And I know that is information that is captured in other places. And so I don't think there's much to elaborate on. I see the perspective that Donna shared previously, but I also have an alternative perspective in terms of, you know, if I'm looking for an African American woman attorney, how would I do that? How would I go about being able to do that if I were looking for? If I were looking for anyone, how would I be able to search them based on demographic information? And so that was really the premise of my my comment statement.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion. Okay, hearing that, one thing I'll say, Melanie, is there also are affinity bars for African American attorneys, LGBTQ attorneys and so on. And typically they have their if if the member wishes, they will publish the member's profile on that website, too. So that's a way to get that information.
No, and I'm aware of that. One of the things that came to light for us is we were having the conversation around the initially when there were no African American male attorneys that were in included in the list of people to serve on the special committee as it relates to discipline. One of the things we talked about in our meeting is that people wear many hats. And so you may not necessarily, you know, you may be an African American woman who doesn't necessarily belong to a a black women's lawyers group, but you may belong to other other ways of reaching you through a sorority or reaching you through an alumni association. And so I certainly understand the affinity groups are there, but how are people able to? If you're looking for a particular attorney that fits a particular profile, how are you able to find them?
Right.
And maybe that's not the role of the state bar. But if if there was an opportunity to include that or even have that discussion, but it doesn't seem like that discussion is one that people are even interested in having. Maybe I'm misinterpreting that. So.
I would say if we were to I would say feel free to work with staff on this if you want to present the issue at a at a meeting and and have it fully vetted. That, in my view, that if we were to change that, it's something we would want to put out for public comment because it could be controversial and get views on it. And, you know, there may be a way to not something that could be, I think, studied and thought about internally and brought back to the board. If if it's if it's appropriate is maybe there's a way to set up a search feature for that information, but not listed on each member's profile. So the mem, you know, that's something that that we could consider. It may be, there may be problems with that, too. But I think it's it's an issue worth studying. If you raised it, I think we ought to look at it.
No, I absolutely would love to have a deeper conversation with staff around that. So thank you.
Okay, terrific.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I think that this would be a really interesting conversation to bring to our council on access, access and fairness. And trustee Shelby is a liaison to that to that committee or to the diversity issues. And so I think that would really be a great place for us to really do a deep dive into some of those questions.
That's a great idea.
You're a mind reader, Donna. That's exactly I was co-op was at the forefront. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Terrific. That's great. Okay. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Move it, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Chair, if Teresa can stop screen sharing, I can project the resolution. Oh, it's already. Okay.
Okay, so I think we had motion by Ruben and who seconded? Or did someone second? I believe it's a question. Okay, sounds like Jose. Jose is the second.
Okay. Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
I.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Gonam?
Yes.
Pertula?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Joel?
I.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
I.
Okay, motion carries unanimous.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Thanks. Thank you, Teresa, and everyone who contributed to this. It's a good good piece of work. All right. If Lisa is ready, we will return to item 703 State Bar Metrics Report.
More time.
You need more time?
Nope. I believe I got it. Okay, how does this look?
Much better.
Perfect. Thank you, Lisa.
It's like a gremlin got into the computer and you know how that happens. Okay, go ahead, Donna.
So I'll introduce the item here. So following along the same theme of accountability that I talked about earlier today during the executive director report. One of the ways that we are accountable is by the regular reporting of metrics. In the past, these metrics have been included as part of the written written executive director's report and sometimes mentioned as part of the oral presentation and other times not. In the interest of bringing this discussion front and center and thereby actually being better accountable, we're moving this item regularly to a standalone item. This report is a wrap up of the 2020 metrics. As the board will recall, going forward, we've updated the metrics against which we will be measuring our performance. And we will be reporting in this format three times per year, March, July and November. We're not going to go through the entire metrics report and the 52 metrics that we're reporting on during this period. The full report is posted attached to the agenda today. Lisa Chavez has has looked at whether she could identify trends in those metrics that we were successful in meeting during these periods and those that we were not. For example, did the pandemic impact the ability to meet some of the metrics? And if so, do we expect the issue to write itself by the time of the next metrics reporter shortly thereafter? And Lisa has identified these themes or trends and many of the metrics that we have successfully met and those that we have not. And so Lisa will be presenting those items according to those identified themes. Lisa?
Thank you, Donna. I'm so just also a little level setting for our new trustees. So the report that you have that's available online lists out reports for all 52 metrics that we tracked for this report. Not all metrics have targets for accountability purposes. Some metrics are just like for information. Just tracking information for its sake to just keep our eye on a trend. So out of the 52 metrics that are reported, 47 have targets for accountabilities. And then starting on page 11, you'll see the 19 that did not meet their targets as well as written explanations from our office leaders on, you know, why they didn't meet the targets and perhaps what they'll do in the future to to strive to meet that target. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of insight with regard to how that the written report is structured. And before I start, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all our office leaders who participate in this process. It can't be easy getting an email from my office several times a year asking for data on these metrics. But everyone always comes through and and I really, really appreciate their collaboration in this really important work. So thank you, office leaders. So let's get started. So the first trend we're going to talk about is the extent to which internal support continued throughout 2020 during the pandemic. And let's start here with a couple of metrics on. The first one on the left is for general services. This is a metric where they strive to process 90% of procurement requisitions with 100% accuracy. And as you can see in the last few quarters of 2020, that office met their goal. And on the right is a metric for our information technology office. And as you can see, 90% of stakeholders report a high level of satisfaction with new technology deployments. This, let me just say, this metric here on the right was is really something everyone should be proud of in that department because our IT department not only deployed a massive desktop refresh and laptop deployment project, also upgrading everyone to Microsoft 365. But they also did this in the deployment in the Zoom environment, et cetera. And so what IT does is every time they close a ticket or close a service, they send out a quick satisfaction survey, and this is these are the results of that survey. So all these high marks are very well received. So another area of our internal support has to do with recruitment and retention. Here on the left is a metric from our recruitment and retention office where they survey staff after the staff participated in a professional development training. Let me just say that our recruitment and retention office continued full speed ahead with their PDs in the Zoom environment. And what they added actually was even trainings for managers on how to lead in the workplace and the new remote environment. So there's again special trainings for management, et cetera. Even like a new workshop on writing for all staff. And as you can see, a high levels of satisfaction there. This middle metric has to do with tracking turnover among OCTC attorneys and investigators. This is example of a metric that does not have a target. We're just tracking it. This is actually a new metric that we just decided just to start representing now. And as you can see, we had, this is for the Q4 of 2020, and we had zero turnover among OCTC attorneys and only 4% among investigators. And so that is a success. And finally, here on the right, this is a metric for our finance office. They had met it several times before, but they finally did. And this has to do with providing budget reports to all office directors. There was slight delay because of our transition to Oracle. But that all got situated. And as an office leader, I can just say that those reports that we do receive are very helpful. Okay, so now let's turn to the topic of attorney support. So this is the ways in which we we support our current attorneys as well as future attorneys. So these two metrics have to do with the A R C R, which is the the Attorney Regulation and Consumer Resources. In particular, these metrics refer to the call center. And as you can see, our the staff, this department has a few metrics and goals with regards to how they deal with these calls. So on the left, as you can see, their goal is to have fewer than 30% of calls abandoned. They not only met that goal in Q3, but really met it in Q4. And on the right has to do with, you know, managing the average call wait time. And as you can see in Q4, they really got it down to the oh, wait, time of just two minutes. Even though they had this A R C R had success with regard to the call center, they didn't meet their metrics with regards to how fast or how how quickly they processed the MCL applications within 30 days of receipt. In Q3, they received actually a huge amount of applications, over 500. That was pretty unprecedented. So that's the explanation for why they did not meet this target of processing 75% within 30 days in Q3. And in Q4, there was actually a higher number of denials than usual, and that always takes longer to process. But A R C R expects this metric to write itself this year.
So can I just make a minor comment? If you can go back to that slide. Maybe I should save this for discussion later, but the 75% metric seems a little low to me. Because to wait for more than 30 days for something like that to be approved seems seems like a long time.
Well, let me give you an example. So let's look at the Q3 2020. So A R C R shared that it took, they finished 75% of them within 32 days. So I think that it's, my impression is is that it's it's not like it's 30 days.
I see. It's just going a couple of days over if they're not meeting. Okay, thank you. I'm glad I asked. That makes me feel better. Thank you.
And I can also clarify that these are, these are the applications from from individual providers who are providing, for example, a course outline. This is the course that we would like to begin teaching. Here's the course outline. Is that approved for credit? And so just so everyone, everyone on the board understands that what it is that we're measuring here.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, another area of attorney support is the lawyer assistant program. And as these, what they do is they survey participants and how well the program is addressing their goals and how satisfied they are overall with their experience. And so as you can see, they've met these goals in Q3 and Q4 in both of these measures. And then finally, 75% of callers report a high level of overall satisfaction with the ethics hotline. The ethics hotline is a confidential research service for attorneys seeking guidance on their professional responsibilities. And it's managed by the Office of Professional Competence. So again, met those goals in both quarters. And then finally, let me share a little some feedback that we received on the voluntary e-learning courses that the Office of Professional Competence manages. So on the left, this measure has to do with how satisfied participants were regarding whether the course contains significant practical content. And they've met the metrics there. But here on the right, they did not meet the they did not meet the, did not meet the measure of whether or not the course met their expectations. So staff has dug into this measure on the right several, every time it comes up because and they find that like lower overall satisfaction ratings are often the results of course functionality experienced by user. And that's explained in more depth than the in the report. But staff definitely continues to review the feedback it receives on all courses that the state bar administers. And then finally, we have to say, good job to our staff who who support the judicial nominees evaluation. They process 100% within 90 days. And they met this metric. And this is an example of an office that has only one metric at an annual basis. And this is, they met it in 2019 and they met it again in 2020. Okay, so now I'm going to turn to some metrics that were, that did not meet their targets as a result of staffing issues. And again, this is, these are examples where we expect metrics to write themselves because once staffing issues get resolved. So on the left, this is a metric for recruitment and retention. And so measure of the of the goal that stay interviews will be conducted for 100% of new hires within 90 days. And as you can see, so in this case, I added more bars to give you a context of like what how an office performed prior to the periods that we're evaluating for this report. So for this report, we're focusing on Q3 and Q4. But what this shows here on the left is prior to Q3 and Q4, this office met this metric easily. But what happened in Q3 is that they lost, they lost the key staff member who who did these these interviews. And so even though these responsibilities were transferred to another staffer, that staff person took on added responsibilities related to the October online bar exam. And in particular, she had spent a lot of time recruiting the exam day proctors and post exam proctors that monitored the flagged online recordings. And so because of that, they did not meet their goals in Q3 and Q4. But we expect this metric to be returned to its normal level, uh, normal levels of performance because that vacancy has since been filled. And finally, here on the right, this is a measure of of the Office of General Counsel. Their goal is to resolve an average of 60 crew cases every month. They met it every month towards the last half of last year with exception of two months. And that was again, just due to staff vacancies. And they expect this performance to return to its normal levels. As you can see, it already did in the latter part of the year. And finally, back to A R C R, this is a measure of the extent to which they fulfill 90% of requests for certificates of standing. And they have a goal of fulfilling 95% within five days. And as you can see, they met it every single quarter except the last one. And this was due to two issues. One, they encountered a technical problem that they took, literally the work paused for 10 days. And then also a key staff member was had to be out for two periods of time. They quickly cross trained staff, didn't cross train fast enough, but they're really confident that now this knowledge has been spread around to a few different staff. And so they expect this to write itself next year.
Lisa, let me just supplement, if you could go back to that slide, just to, as a point of information, the certificates of standing are documents that attorneys typically need to submit to some other jurisdiction as part of the licensing process there or to be admitted pro habic in courts, other courts in which they're not licensed to practice law generally. So they get a permission to practice just with regard to one case. So that's what these certificates are.
And as you can see from the note down at the bottom, they received, they receive over 2,000 of these requests every quarter. So, and some of them need to be notarized. So that's another level of another step in this work. Okay, now let's talk about a couple of metrics that we believe were impacted by the pandemic. And so let's take a look, on the left is a metric for admissions. And they set a goal that they were going to reduce exam costs by 5% compared. And so instead, for the October 20 exam, costs had increased. That explanation is given to you in detail in the report, but it all has to do with costs related to transitioning to an online exam. I know that sounds probably counterintuitive. How did cost increase if we're online? All that is explained in that in that description. And had to do with just all the different resources that had to be deployed in order to pull off that that online exam. And on the right.
I'm sorry to interrupt you again. Donna, do you just want to give one or two sentences on on the I think I know what the focus of the cost is, but I'd rather you just give the trustees one or two sentences to be sure they're up to date.
Sure. So the the costs were largely impacted by the additional vendor costs to provide the exam ID and exam monitoring, which are critical elements in being able to conduct an exam remotely. Also, because the state bar not only provided onsite hotel rooms for individuals who had testing accommodations which could not be accommodated remotely, but also offered to provide hotel space for individuals who had extenuating circumstances that prevented them from being able to take the exam at home. For example, they just simply did not have large enough space that they could close the door and be in an office for two straight days to take an exam. And their their home setting wasn't conducive to them being able to take the exam. We offered hotel space to them. As a result, we contracted for more individual hotel rooms than we normally do. So although we eliminated the conference centers and and the, and the big, you know, convention centers and the big conference rooms, we did have more individual hotel hotel rooms. Because because we offered it to both the testing accommodations, individuals who could not, whose accommodations could not be met remotely. And those with extenuating circumstances. And we eliminated the idea of a semi-private room. And everybody had an individual hotel room.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Donna. Okay, so on the right, this is a measure for the lawyer assistance program and they had set a goal to always to increase their intakes by 10% compared to their 2018 baseline. I include their data point for 2019 to show as a reference point that they met that easily. And but 2020, they did not. And the conclusion is that this is largely due to the pandemic because LAP programs across the nation have reported a level or decreased enrollment, suggesting that people in 2020 are de-prioritizing efforts to help themselves instead because they need to help others. But so this, so whether or not this metric will write itself completely for 2021, I think it's TBD depending how quickly we come out from underneath the pandemic and all that in place.
And I would note that like the admissions one before it, this is another one that I think is counterintuitive. My assumption certainly was, you know, we've all heard from the minute the pandemic started, we've heard about sort of the the increase in in people engaging in substance use behaviors. The the anxiety and depression and stress that was visited upon numerous people as a result of the pandemic, job loss, dealing with family stress and a variety of other things. And the expectation was that more people would be signing up for this program that provides assistance for those with substance use issues or mental health disorders. But as Lisa mentioned, nationally, the 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 information that we had was that the programs remain level or saw decreases in the enrollments.
Thank you for that. And then here's another example of a metric that we believe was impacted by the pandemic. So this is, has to do with A R C R's resource call center. And they set a goal of that fewer than 40% of their calls are going to be transferred out of that initial group of staff that answers a calls. And the reason why it's a goal is because staff should ideally be able to answer most questions like at the call center. And what happens? It gets transferred. And if a question comes in, that's incredibly complex and it needs a staff member to spend more time researching an issue, solving problems, finding out information. And so as you can see, the A R C R met their target in Q1 2020. But starting with QT, Q2, they did not, only slightly, but they still did not meet it. Q2 is when this, the call center started to receive calls related to admissions and what's going to happen to the bar exam given the pandemic. And so a lot of those calls had to be transferred out to staff more knowledgeable to talk about, talk with people about those issues and their concerns. And also the center began receiving calls in 2020 regarding the provisional licensing program. And that required transfer to more knowledgeable staff. Okay, that's all I have. Um, Susan, anyone have any questions about the metrics? And I hope, we hope, Donna, and I hope that this is a more useful format. Like Donna said, in the past year, it's always, this report has always been attached to her the ED report. And we thought that this could possibly be a better venue.
Well, I want to thank you for the report. It's very informative and very user friendly and easy to understand. So, thank you. You're giving a thumbs up. All right. Any other discussion before we move on? Okay, this is informational only, obviously. So there's nothing for us to vote on. All right. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, unless Sarah needs to correct me, I think we are moving on to our final item in the open session, which is item 705, discussion regarding the appointment of the state bar executive director. We will be continuing this discussion in the closed session that will follow completion of our open session. And I think we will get some guidance on what should be discussed in open versus closed. And you may be, it's possible that you may be interrupted with some guidance about whether something you're raising should be an open or closed. So just be aware of that. And let me turn it over to those who are presenting.
With Lee, that would be trustee Sewell and myself, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Sure, please proceed.
So this is meant to be an update to the board and to those folks in the public who who are interested in this process that the board started on January 22nd. So by way of reminder, the board adopted a resolution under which it appointed trustee Sewell and myself as the executive director of search committee to take up the charge of starting and and hopefully finishing very quickly, a new search for the state bar's new executive director.
On January 25th, our staff, and by the way, let me just preface everything I'm about to say with a very large thank you to Donna and and in particular Steve Mazur for the fine work that he's done in dealing with trustee Sewell and myself and our schedules and the significant amount of work that we found in front of ourselves to try and meet the board's expectation to move this thing along expeditiously while at the same time being deliberate and purposeful in our work. So thank you, Steve. Thank you, Donna, for making Steve available to us. And of course, guidance from the general counsel's office as we proceed through this process. On the 25th of January, staff requested a proposal from Bob Murray and Associates, who is the search firm that had already been contracted with the state bar to conduct the search for the new chief trial counsel. And figured figuring that you know, two birds with one stone, stone sort of thing. Bob Murray Associates was kind enough to turn around very quickly, a proposal four days later on the 29th, under which they proposed somewhat of an expedited schedule to conduct outreach and recruitment. And then ultimately, interviews with the search committee and to bring back to the board suitable candidates for for the position sometime around the first or second week of April. So the proposal was for a 10-week process using the the brochure that we had most recently used for search. And I have to say that Bob Murray Associates has been, has been quite efficient and very diligent. The search committee, that is, Marty and myself, have met regularly, starting on February 11th and pretty much every week thereafter to 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 get updates from Bob Murray Associates and provide direction on the ensuing work to reach out to potential candidates. Our first meeting with Bob Murray Associates was on the 18th, where we laid out the following potential schedule. The first week of the process was going to be the week of February 19th and was the week of February 19th, where the marketing brochure was finalized. Weeks two through six was the actual outreach, sending the brochure out to quite an extensive list of organizations and partners of the state bar. And in that same four-week window, which we currently find ourselves for Bob Murray Associates to conduct appropriate screenings and potential interviews of candidates. Week seven, which we anticipate to be March 29th through the 2nd to complete that screening and recommend candidates to the search committee, to trustee Sewell and myself. By April 2nd, we are hoping to conduct our interviews actually by April 2nd. So I'm actually, I need to point out a change there. The search committee, I'm sorry, the Bob Murray Associates is expecting to have several candidates for us to interview by the end of that that sixth week by March 26th. And then we are hoping to bring final candidates to the board for your review. Sometime in the first two weeks of April, which would allow us to, as somebody mentioned earlier today, assuming all goes well, to have a candidate in in place by our May board meeting. Okay, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to trustee Sewell to provide a few more details on the outreach in particular.
Thank you, trustee Duran. And I too would just like to echo my appreciation for for Donna, Steve Mazur in particular, and also the folks from Bob Murray and Associates. As trustee Duran has has outlined already in terms of the schedule, it's been ambitious. It's been somewhat expedited for sure, but I would also say very thorough and very meticulous. I just wanted to provide the the board with just a little bit more in the way of insight in terms of how we've conducted some of the outreach efforts. And we'll go into a great amount of detail. I mean, I think some of that probably would be better discussed in in closed session, but I would like to just provide the board and the public that may be listening with just a little bit of how we've been able to sort of conduct ourselves from an outreach effort. Once Bob Murray and Associates was under contract, they immediately began outreach efforts. And those outreach efforts, including included engagement with members of the board, folks from the Supreme Court, folks from the state legislature, as well as took some of the state bar standing committees to solicit names and also potential organizations to contact. Their outreach did not stop there. It also included reaching out to some 150 different sort of bar associations, lawyer groups and other legal and professional groups to also solicit names and also other organizations to to contact. I'm sorry, I'm in my living room and I just looked over and I see my dog. I thought my dog was getting ready to bark. So I would just get ready to mute myself and apologize. I would also just sort of make note of the fact that the the search also made extensive use of social media and including LinkedIn, Twitter, Facebook, as well as direct phone calls to a variety of sort of individuals and organizations on Bob Murray's already existing sort of networking list. And I would say all told, if you combine what we've done in terms of social media, what we've done in terms of direct phone calls as well as reaching out to to organizations, we're somewhere upward plus of 400, 450 different sort of contact points that we've attempted to try and solicit names from as well as get information about others who we might want to try to contact. To date, with about a week to go, as trustee Duran indicated, we have a growing pool of applicants and I think some very viable candidates. we have a growing pool of applicants and I think some very viable candidates. The goal is to win that list down to a reasonable amount for, for us to, to at least interview as the search committee and then bring that final list of two to three names back to the full board for the board's participation in the, in a final interview process.
Thank you, Arnie. I should, I should have pointed out in my remarks that the position is still open and closes on March twenty-fifth. So I'm sure all of you have been encouraged to spread the word to your, your various networks. If you know individuals who might be interested in this great opportunity, please, by all means, encourage them to contact Bob Murray Associates and get their resumes and applications in by the deadline. We would be most appreciative. And I believe that's all we have. If any of the trustees have questions that we're, we, we could answer in open session, I'm happy to do so. Looks like not, Mr. Chair, if that's.
Not. All right, I think we have reached the end of our closed session. And so we will adjourn the open session and proceed, to continue with the closed session meeting that we began yesterday. And I assume the link has gone to the trustees?
It was just sent.
All right, so we will see you in the other Zoom room momentarily. We are returning to open session after our closed session. Before I adjourn, I want to note the code sections that support the closed session today. They are government code section one, 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 two, six, A one, and government code section one, 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 two, six, point, two. We have nothing to report out after today's closed session and the meeting is adjourned. Thanks to everyone.